Okay, welcome. It's February 7, 2017, to the Planning Board meeting. And we're going to start at 7:05 PM. This is a public hearing on a special permit for a common driveway for 245 and 249 Green Street. And we have cornerstone engineering here to present tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm representing Eric Colet, who happens to live right next door at this house and owns the property that we're talking about tonight. The property is just beyond what used to be the Shunder property that the town took over for open space, which is located right here. So, right at the bend in the road, this is right on the left-hand side as you go by Mr. Shunder's old property. The parcel has pretty severe topography to it, going from the front, from the rear to the front. There's a substantial wetland that runs across the entire frontage. And as I said, Mr. Colet lives here. The proposal is to build a four-bedroom dwelling with a septic system and a well. Subsurface conditions there are pretty limited. There's a very slow perk rate and groundwater is high, which is the reason that we have all the fill. Everything is coming up. In order to get around filling in wetlands, we opted for a common driveway proposal. What you see in background is Mr. Colet's current driveway. We're not expanding that at all, coming off the road. And then we're bearing off about 100 feet off the road and then transitioning to the single driveway. Driveway's 12 feet wide. The grade is 12 to 13 percent going up. We're coming in at about 6, and then it goes to 14 percent, which is in existence currently. Site distance, in Fred's letter, he asked that we show site distance. Site distance is excellent in both directions, in excess of 200 feet. Fred also asked that we put a -- originally, we just came in here, no radius on this side, but by adding this radius, it makes it for an easier transition if someone's trying to turn around. Additionally, the fire chief asked, originally, we had this driveway kind of cut in here. He wanted this extended out further so if emergency vehicles up there, there's more room to turn around. So, that has been expanded as well. We've been before the Conservation Commission. They closed the hearing. Water Health has approved of the septic system. So, this would be the final approval that we would need in order to get building. And that'd be it.
Okay. Do we have any comments, Kathy, from town staff?
You have a review letter from Fred. Do you want him to go over that?
Yep.
I had done a review letter for you for your last meeting that got canceled. And in the meantime, we've had a meeting with Mr. Sullivan. And the first thing I want to clarify is that there was a little discrepancy when I reviewed the plan as to which regulations we were reviewing it in accordance with -- we have a section in the zoning bylaw that talks about common driveways and requirements for two driveways, two lots to be served by one driveway, and then a reference to the Planning Board regulations for more than two. And then in the Planning Board regulations, subdivision rules and regs separate from the zoning bylaw, we have regulations that have more detail about what's required for two and what's required for more than two. We don't get that many with just two. So, I was assuming that Mr. Sullivan made a mistake and was using the regulations from the zoning bylaw, but he--
Why wouldn't you assume?
I am a man to admit when I was wrong. And there was confusion, which we'll clarify at town meeting.
Yeah, we are fixing this little snaffle.
Yep.
So, the -- one of the comments, one of the first comments in my original letter was that the driveway was supposed to be 18 feet wide. Mr. Sullivan rightfully pointed out that the zoning bylaw calls for a 12-foot-wide driveway. And so, that is what's proposed. It is appropriate in this condition specifically because of the wetland constraints on either side of the existing driveway. And having already gone to conservation, the fact that it's about 100 feet of common portion and then two driveways, it really is appropriate for them to have that turnaround at the end of the common portion and then not have to do much else to get this driveway in, given the fact that the wetlands run all along Green Street through there and the significance of filling in there would be -- especially with that grade, it would be much more of an impact to the wetlands. So, it seems appropriate. But in any event, my first letter indicated I was reviewing in accordance with the Planning Board regulations. That's not the case. It was the zoning bylaw, and that is properly referenced in the letter that you have before you. And as Kathy indicated, we are going to go with several other zoning articles at town meeting and add the reference to the zoning bylaw that sends everyone to the subdivision rules and regulations, whether it's two or more than two lots to be developed, because more time was spent on those regulations and they're a little bit more strict and appropriate, in my opinion. That takes care of number one. The second comment on the letter of today is that the site distance for the driveway entering the roadway shall be 200 feet, a minimum of 200 feet. And they did show on the plan a minimum of 200 feet, but what he didn't show was what the actual amount is. I agree that it's extensive, but because the regulation says it'll be a minimum of 200 feet and it says it's a minimum of 200 feet, it doesn't really help me too much. It needs to say 205 or 2,000 or whatever the number is so that we have it shown on the plan that way as opposed to just that. I believe that, given the rest of the comments, you could approve with that condition being clarified in the future. The plan does show the turnaround, as we discussed in our meeting a week ago or so. It still requires a -- should have a declaration of covenants, although I have to admit now that I don't believe that's in the zoning bylaw. I think that's in the regulation, in the subdivision rule and regulations.
No, no, I think it's in -- I think it's in the zoning. Just going up there.
All right. Then the rate of the post-development runoff versus the pre-development rate of runoff is in there. However, given the fact that the driveway is not expanding to 18 feet and the amount of impervious cover that's being added for that area of the turnaround is right at the end of the common portion, I would agree with Mr. Sullivan that that is insignificant and therefore, building a drainage system to accommodate a very small amount of water really would damage more wetlands than help the situation. So, I don't believe there's any more water that's going to come out onto Green Street. I don't think there's any issue with the public road, so I believe it's adequate the way it is. The plan has been amended to show the actual location of the pipe at the end of the existing driveway. There were two inverts shown there. My assumption from those two inverts were pipes are going across Green Street, but actually, those two inverts are connected by a pipe that goes across the existing driveway parallel to Green Street. So, it shows that the water is going to staying on the side of Green Street as opposed to being discharged across the street, which was my concern. And as Mr. Sullivan indicated, that he's met with the Conservation Commission, submitted a notice of intent. I believe they've closed the hearing and issued an order of condition approving project substantially in conformance with what you have here. And it's okay. And then the last condition is that, as with all common driveways and site plans and subdivisions, that we have an as-built plan at the end. Can that not be -- the certificate of occupancy be conditioned upon this approval of that as-built plan?
Okay, just a quick question. So, down this driveway, can a fire truck get down the driveway and turn around? Does it have the ability to turn around or does it just have to back out?
You mean if it goes up to the top?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if it -- I don't think you're going to take a full hook and ladder up there and turn it around, but the smaller -- the smaller fire engine would be able to.
Okay.
And certainly an ambulance.
Okay.
I believe the -- what we've done in the past is worked with the fire chief on an SU vehicle, which is what the ambulance is. It's a small unit with no extra length than a regular heavy-duty pickup truck kind of thing.
If that vehicle needs to go down there, but what it--
It can.
Oh, it can?
Oh, it -- that's the point of the turnaround. An SU vehicle is the size of the ambulance.
Okay.
That can be accommodated here. The bigger trucks would be SU 40, whatever they call it.
Yeah, his template's for like a 42-foot.
Yeah, but that -- we use that for commercial vehicles, a trailer, tractor-trailer type thing, for commercial and industrial buildings. But on a residential project such as this, if SU vehicle is the predominant vehicle, that would be going up there, ambulance and such.
Okay. Unless there's a fire, you'd need a fire truck to go up there.
Right, in which case--
Not much different than most of the driveways up on Green Street. You know, there's a ton of them up there, similar to this.
Okay.
And we have this in the file, and I think I sent around the copy. There's a, you know, a review letter from the fire chief saying that he's, you know, okay with this. What he did ask for, obviously, was the turnaround, as the previous fire chief did also, so that, you know, again, that's shown on the plan.
Okay.
So, he's all set for that.
Any questions to the board members?
As a point of clarification, number four, is the declaration of easements and so forth. I mean, I think that's a good idea, but--
It is--
It's required.
It's a requirement.
In the zoning, it is okay.
So, that'll stay.
Solid.
Leslie?
I just have one question. When you go down the driveway, there are the berms. So, that's when they're -- when you're building, you're going to have berms there for runoff?
Yes. Yes, what the Conservation requested. We had a few meetings with the Conservation Commission. Obviously, it's very sensitive in that regard. But what they asked, there's a berm here. It's what it's going to be there. They'll just dig it down like about three inches and then pile it on the down grade inside. So, during construction only, it'll come down, it will hit that berm, and rather than just lying down the driveway and picking up the -- going into the wetland, it will be diverted into a swale, a riprap swale here. A driveway, when it's finished, and there's a sequence of construction that's about 15 different things that have to be done in order to protect the wetlands, these riprap swales will stay and the driveway will be not super-elevated, but elevated on this side so that when water is coming down, it would be directed towards these riprap swales. And then at the end of the swale, there's a double erosion control barrier at the end. But you are correct that these are temporary during construction only.
But when it's finished, you said there are going to be places. So, the water doesn't run down the hill across the whole driveway at all times. It goes down and--
It's directed more towards this side of it.
Yeah.
And this is all undisturbed here.
I was just thinking how it has it going down the berm and across, like for a night like tonight where it's raining and then freezing, for a long steep driveway like that, is it better to have like a swale underneath? So, it's not running down the whole driveway?
This will not be done during the winter.
Right.
You know--
Well, I'm just thinking for the owner.
You mean at the end of it?
Yeah.
Well, you don't want to -- you don't want to stop the flow. You just want to direct it away.
Right, yeah.
And that's what this reflects. The swales that -- the riprap swales are off the driveway.
Yeah.
It's in the shoulder of the driveway and then heading down the slope.
But those will be after construction, too.
That will stay.
So, the water just doesn't flow across the whole driveway.
It allows the water to shed off of the driveway at a couple of locations rather than building up a lot of depth on the storm ledge. Not technically what's covered in the review of the common driveway because that portion is beyond the common portion of the driveway. That's just the one house. That's why it's appropriate for Conservation to have those conditions and minimize that impact of the wetland in the front.
Yeah, essentially, just for information purposes, this whole thing is going to be constructed and stabilized before anything else is done. So, if you do get a torrential downpour, you know, it's not always going right down into the wetland.
Any other questions? Okay. So, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Move to close the hearing?
Second.
Okay. And then we just need a motion to vote on the special permit for the common driveway with just those two changes that you recommended, Fred, right? Or have they already been noted in?
Well, there's the condition about the--
Adding the site distance.
Adding the site distance.
The numerical value of the site distance, the declaration of covenants and easements, and the as-built plan.
Okay. So, want to make a motion?
A move to approve the special permit application for the property of 245 and 249 Green Street. And as conditions, the conditions set forth in the letter we have from the town engineer.
Also to include--
Actually, the last condition, no certificate of occupancy until the as-built -- until the Planning Board agrees that it meets the regulations.
So, just reference the -- I mean, I'll add those--
It's in the town--
You just reference the town.
Okay. Second motion?
There was a motion.
Yeah, second.
Nobody--
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Vote, all in favor?
Great.
There you go, Mike.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Drive safe. Stay warm.
Bye, Mike.
Right.
So, Fred, do you want to go over with us on the bond reduction request that you have?
Sure.
Okay, so we don't keep you very long.
Okay. The developer at Sterling Court had requested a bond reduction. No, I actually didn't get it off the agenda. You didn't have the other one on there on the agenda from the Clarkwood?
We have Clarkwoods and we have Sterling Court.
Okay, so Sterling Court we can do.
Okay.
Sterling Court, the developer had asked for bond reduction a while ago, and I think he missed the deadline there in January for the early meeting. And so, the second meeting, I had done a letter based upon reviewing the work out there. It was going along pretty well. The last house is up. I don't believe they're all sold. I know that the developer sold one to someone else who built the house. The last house was built by someone other than the original developer. But they're all up now. The base pavement is in. Base pavement is in on the sidewalk. The curbing is in. It's in good shape. The detention basins have been in for a while and they're completely stabilized. It seemed to be working well. What's left is the top coat on the sidewalk, top coat on the roadway, and the asphalt drawings and getting things all buttoned up with the deeds and easements to be drafted and submitted to Town Council for review. I expect there's no reason that they couldn't finish it in early in the construction season this coming year and then have it on 2018 annual town meeting for acceptance. Even if there's a special, we don't put streets on there, so it would -- it's only done at the annual. So, given the work remaining, I've estimated the value of the bond that you need to hold at $55,000. And the current bond is $84,500, so you could release the difference, which is $29,500.
All right. Any questions in the board members?
I move that we reduce the bond for the Sterling Court estates to -- through the amount of $84,500 to reduce to the amount of $55,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All set on that? And then, that was for Sterling Court. Do you have one for Clarkwoods?
I do not have one from Clarkwoods. As you may recall, Clarkwoods developer is a gentleman by the name of Craig Callahan, lives in one of the existing houses. Mr. Callahan is new as a developer goes. He had those two houses and decided to get into the development game. And so, he's been learning along the way.
The process.
Yeah.
Very diplomatic.
No, he's doing everything that we've asked of him to do. In the beginning, when he said he wanted to build the road, I recommended that he build as much of it as he could so that the bond amount would be as, you know, the work remaining would be as little as possible. And he said, "Okay." And then he found out that he needed a covenant release to sell one of the existing houses that actually gets access to the subdivision from Howard Street instead of Washburn. And so, the road was nowhere near done and therefore, the bond was much more than he had thought it would be. And so, he's now learned that he's been able to get -- he did -- he was able to make the transfer without the release because the attorneys agreed to a holdback, and that's between him and his attorneys. Really doesn't matter to us. So, he has -- doesn't have the proceeds of the sale of that house until he gets the lot release. So, but apparently, they've extended it long enough for him to wait to put the base coat of pavement on in the spring when the weather gets nice. And so, that bond reduction request has been withdrawn. I guess you could say he just asked us to hold off until he could get some more work done. But that came in late this afternoon when we were preparing for tonight's meeting. One of the reasons that there was some more work done since the last time you were going to meet on January 17, they were installing the water line and the testing of the installed water line was completed yesterday. And so, I was waiting till today to revise the bond estimate for all of you tonight, and then he asked that we hold off. So, no, there's no bond reduction for Clarkwoods.
So, there's also down here, the lot releases for Clarkwoods.
Well, that was the -- that's the thing, that he wanted the lot releases and we, as a general practice, do not give lot releases until the bond is posted. No bond -- no need for the lot releases, so he wants to continue to work on the roadway, reduce the amount of bond, and then get the lot releases when he wants to sell one of those other houses.
Okay.
Or one of those other lots.
Okay. So, maybe he'll be coming back at a future meeting?
I expect he -- well, I know he'll be back at a future meeting, but it will be -- I would not expect it to be until the base pavement is down, which won't be until at least May, June.
Okay, great. All right. And then, what about subdivision rules and regs, Kathy? We're not going to talk about that tonight.
No, we don't have any update on that.
No update on that. Okay. So, just quick, Mike, are you here for Sterling Court?
No.
Okay, because we just finished that. Okay. So, with regards to -- we can go through the minutes. Let's go through the list. Subdivision rules and regs, we don't have anything on. Master plan. We can just talk briefly about the master plan. I had spoken to Teresa, and, you know, she had recommended, since the board had not come to an agreement on the number of members who are going to be on the master plan committee, that she agreed that with me that we would increase it to three. So, we would then like to nominate George, myself, and Amy, unless anyone objects, to be on the master plan committee. Anybody object? No. Do we need to vote on it?
No, I mean--
No.
Are you sure? Because we voted at the last meeting, it would have to be two.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I mean, it's a--
So, if someone could make a motion and then second it, and then we'll take a vote.
I have a quick question. So, we talked about doing that only if the entire composition grew as well?
Yeah, the entire composition is going to grow, though, right? We are--
I mean, that was Teresa's suggestion at the last meeting.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if you want to do that, that's--
I think that was the discussion that we had last time.
Yeah.
Is if there was a concern about there being too Planning Board-intensive, that we expand the committee to--
Okay. So, we could make a motion. Would this go to the Board of Selectmen because they need to--
No, they haven't voted on anything. This is all going as a recommendation to the town administrator of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So, if we could make a recommendation through our vote that we expand the number of members of the board that we talked about when Teresa was here, Kathy? And then--
Does anyone remember?
It's in the minutes, actually.
I think it's in minutes.
I think it's 15, but--
December minutes?
Yeah.
January 3?
Yeah.
Thirteen numbers, only have two. Master planning committee, thirteen. Yeah, so we're talking about, yeah--
Was it in the December minutes?
Increase it to sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
Yeah. Was it in the November or December minutes, Leslie?
December.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So, if we can reference that, and then if someone wants to make a motion, we can vote on it, and then add the recommendation from our minutes to the administrator and the Board of Selectmen.
I make a motion that we change the composite -- I propose -- I make a motion that the composition of the master planning committee be a total of 16 members with three representatives from the Planning Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the list is consideration of the minutes from November 15, 12/6 and 1/3. Has everyone gone through them?
Yes. I have the same Amy's change of estimate.
What you have, yeah, we don't have the January ones.
Okay.
So, what you will have in front of you is, in case anyone had, whatever, there's a set of November 15 minutes and a set of December 6 minutes. And then Amy sent me, I mean, Amy sent in changes, and I gave you copies of those. Usually, like the changes from Leslie come in are just, you know, grammatical or -- so, those I just -- which is great. So, those I just make. But Amy's got, you know, however you want to go over her changes. I mean, I don't make the changes to them.
Right.
And usually, when I do the red, the yellow is my change. The red is a question that I had when I was reading the minutes. Like, I don't want those included in the minutes. It was like, kind of a question. Like, on December 15th. November, I don't remember because I did them last time, but December 15th, I had one question with your Kathy, but I don't need those included.
I actually haven't even looked at the December ones, Amy. I just added them, that they were your change, and I didn't have a chance to look at them this afternoon.
I guess to everybody, Elaine and the board, the ones in red are just a question. It doesn't need to be included in the minutes.
All right. So, why don't we start with November's 15th minutes? And the first time we're seeing Amy's changes, if we can just sort of go through them. Leslie, you've already submitted yours, right? If you had any?
Yeah.
Right, George, if you had any, you submitted them.
Yep, Teresa's gone through both sets. She's fine with both sets. And then same with Leslie.
So, page three, I just crossed out had and wrote had because what I -- I guess I don't have to explain them, but--
So, Amy, on page six of the November 15th minutes, do you want to just take out that after the word "project," take out that sentence, and the project was upheld? Is that what you want, to take out that sentence? Or--
What do you mean?
Well, you highlight it, but then you put red--
Oh, the red? The red was just a question I had for Kathy at the time. I can -- the red questions I can ask at a different meeting. When I go through the minutes, I'm reading them, and my red was just a question that I wanted to ask. But now, it's so long ago, I don't remember.
Okay, so, we're not going to include the red?
Yeah, I wouldn't include the red.
But the other highlights that everything that's--
And the yellow is what I choose, yeah.
You would like to remove, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone object to Amy's corrections where she changes everything that's highlighted in yellow?
Right, but this is actually being added, right? This yellow is being added?
Some added and some striked.
The other is striked.
Okay.
That's addition. Other stuff is strikeout.
Okay, so, yellow strikeouts, remove yellow highlighted, you want to add in?
Yeah.
Those are all fine with me.
Okay.
Motion that we approve from November 15.
Yeah.
That's a nice meeting.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's go over to the December meeting. And again, with December, Leslie and George, you have submitted your feedback, right?
Yes.
Teresa's done her feedback.
Anything with a strikeout is to go in there. Anything to strike out with the gal in yellow?
Okay, has everyone read Amy's changes? I just want to, so Amy, on page six.
Yep.
So, did, did you think you said this at the meeting or is it that you want to add that and...
No, I definitely did. We were talking about the differences between the townhouse and the multifamily.
Okay.
And I said, I still, we're going to talk about that again tonight because I still would like further clarification.
Okay. Any feat, just as we can go through each one, feedback from Leslie or George on this? No? Okay. Feedback from staff on it?
I don't get it.
No, okay. Onto the next, page seven from the ZBA, and want a clarification on what sections of the signs are included in the square footage calculations? I don't have any problem with that. Is that, is that okay? Okay. On the next section where we talk about, again, ZBA stuff, if there is no comment from the planning board to the ZBA, the project's considered acceptable by the planning board. This was not the case as we didn't even review it. And Ms. Peresky stated that she recommends the planning board be allowed time to review ZBA applications going forward.
I just want to point out on that, whatever you want to do with the minutes, but that's, that's not true. The planning, I mean, the zoning board of appeals doesn't think that if, if you don't have a comment letter to them, that that means you approve of it.
Yeah, that's how I read it. That the, the planning board has so long to write a letter and after, I don't even know, I knew at the time when I said it, but after so many days, if the planning board doesn't submit a letter to the ZBA, it's, it's accepted as they...
No, the zoning board, if you send a letter to them, then they know that you have comments on the project. If you don't send a letter to them, you don't send a letter to them. They don't, they don't talk about it, they don't think about it, they don't, it doesn't mean anything.
We're not part of their approval process, they don't approve projects or...
Right, exactly. I mean, you don't, you don't have any authority.
I'll have to find it. It's in the bylaws. But I don't have to find it now, but I'll get back to it.
It may say that, Amy, I'm just telling you what is the context.
Oh, how they intervene, okay.
It doesn't, they, that's not what it means.
To them, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, for 30 years, that's not what it has meant to them. They, if the planning board sends a letter, then they take that letter into consideration. If you don't send a letter, that doesn't, they don't even talk about it. They don't even recognize that there was a letter or not a letter.
If it does say it in there, it should be removed then, because...
The, I don't know where it says it in there, but it's, it's, you don't have any authority.
No, no, I know, but if it says, if it says we do, it should be removed.
Well, we have authority to give comments on any application. Like, just like the police and the fire give us recommendations and sometimes we say, well, there's nothing from the police and fire. Sometimes it's said, well, we gave it to them and if they didn't get back to us, they didn't have a problem with it. So I felt it's the same thing with the planning board. The planning board saw it and they didn't have a problem with it. So they didn't say anything. I'll find it before the next meeting, but I have to read through the whole thing again.
Okay, so any comments from Leslie and George? Do you want it to stay in there, remove it? I don't, I don't actually remember whether you said it or didn't say it, so I'm trusting you did say this at the meeting?
I did, we can go back.
Okay. I don't remember back in December.
Well, I mean, if it doesn't reflect what the, what the ZBA does with it, I don't think it should be in there.
On the other hand, if she said it, it should be in regardless of, if it's like what Donald Trump puts out, if it's said, it's in the minutes.
Oh, it's an alternative fact, okay. Okay, we'll move forward then.
Thank you, Sean Spicer.
No one seems to have an issue with that.
Or you're the only one, I don't know.
The last is just about a copy that you wanted. An old version of the zoning, I remember there, discussion happening where you wanted to go back to 1986 bylaw. I don't remember verbatim if you stated this.
Oh, Kathy and I just have a little discussion about it, but I didn't remember that she said that I should come down and look for it. I thought, we talked about the one, I said it's the one from like 1979, I said, oh, I think I know what that one is.
You know, I think we've discussed this before, the minutes are only supposed to be so specific. There are times where it's just excessive.
Right, well, the red, the red isn't just going in there.
No, 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 I understand, I'm just saying there's certain...
My red was a question for Kathy.
Yeah.
I can tell you, we never went through any of this in the eighties.
Okay, so...
Well, sometimes it's me and it says stuff about me, I'm like, if I didn't say that, I don't want it in writing. Because I go back and read them, I'd be like, she said that?
All right. I'm not quite sure we should put that in there because I think you made your point that you wanted just a copy of the zoning bylaws since 1986.
Right, but it wasn't each zoning bylaw, it was just one.
Okay. So...
It has amendments to it, but...
Okay. So, someone want to make a motion to accept the minutes? I'm not quite sure that last comment needs to be in there, but as we talked about being that specific, we can take it out. But someone needs to make a motion.
Move to approve the December 6th minutes with the exception of the last suggested comment.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're done with our minutes and at the next meeting we'll get January 3rd's minutes, right? Okay. Kathy, do we have any A and Rs?
No.
Okay. We've just discussed Clark Woods, we've taken care of Sterling Court's bond reduction, we've taken care of Clark Woods' bond reduction. Town meeting is the 24th, which means we have to talk on our zoning amendments. I'd, I'd say we should probably review this, but have more lengthy discussion when Teresa gets back at the next meeting on the 28th. So what, what Kathy has done is she sort of has presented the articles as we're going to go to town meeting with these articles. And my recommendation is to probably try and, we could have a brief discussion tonight, but I'd like to have everybody review them, go back with their thoughts, get them back to Kathy and Teresa for our next meeting on the 28th. We'd wrap it up on the 28th and be ready to go for town meeting in April.
Do we have that?
I'm sorry, the 21st.
I know we have a placeholder on the, on the agenda, but do we have the flexibility of waiting till the, our next meeting to...
21st?
Well, yeah, these, the, yes.
Yeah, we do.
The, by, by the, you know, the calendar that the Town Administrator and the Selectmen put forth every year, you know, warrant articles from boards and staff were due today. So what I had done was, you know, I mean, we've been talking about this for a few months now. And so all of the articles that you discussed, I just put into the format of, of the warrant, speak, so to speak.
Yeah.
So, nothing has changed here since, you know, your last discussion. The, the Selectmen will review a draft warrant at their February 27th meeting. So, if you have, you know, if, on the 21st, you know, you, I mean, there, you do have some room, you know, if you wanted to make changes. There's also, you know, because the, there's wording that goes to the, into the warrant and then after your public hearing, because the public hearing, you just, there's just, the schedule doesn't allow for you to hold a public hearing prior to the warrant, you know, being put together. So the public hearings are typically held in March for the, for the planning board. And so, you know, at that time, you may make changes also. You know, I mean, there may be people, you know, people may come to the meeting, they may request changes or revisions, you may agree with them and then that would be, that would show up in the motion at town meeting. So, it's not completely cast in stone tonight, George, to answer your question, but it's, you know, if, I mean, on the 21st, you know, and it'll be the morning of the 22nd, which is a Wednesday, and that's when the Selectmen get, gets their packets, is Wednesday afternoon. So, you know, it, it may or may not get reflected in that draft warrant that they initially reviewed.
I have a minor comment for the moratorium one, which is the December 15th, if reversed, the December 15th, 2016 date.
Yeah, the town...
Who it is in the, in the future, it should be in the past.
Right, they, they have, this is what, what is what Town Council gave us.
Okay.
And they have to revise this and they're kind of holding off on it. First of all, based on, they've got to update it because of what the legislator had done, legislators had done, you know, about extending it out six months.
Right.
And then the, I forgot what else they said they had to look at. Where's the December date, Leslie?
About halfway through A.
Yeah, December 15th.
Oh, no, about, just about for the fourth.
Oh, yeah, so it just, yeah, so it just needs to say to, yeah, began to take a break. But they, they're going to, you know, they're going to have, they're going to have revisions to us. Because we don't, you know, and Town, the Town Administrator is aware of that, that, you know, this moratorium is, I mean, the language may change again slightly because of just the revisions that are being made and something like that. So thank you for saying that, for finding that. But also, the, the green communities, which I can talk about after we, we do this. I don't have the language yet for the green communities because they haven't prepared it yet at the state level. It was supposed to come, they were hoping that it was going to come the end of January. Now they're hoping it'll be next week or so.
So we just talked about one article Kathy, which is the marijuana article. And that's, we're going to wait for your guidance on that, right? And if everyone can take a chance to read this and then come back at the next meeting and you'll probably have an update and maybe even a motion will happen by the time we go to town meeting because you're getting a lot of feedback on that. Okay. The second article that's going forward or proposed is, is this from you, Amy? This new, is it a new one on...
The two family?
Yeah.
No, this was, this is one of the staff articles.
Okay.
We, I have talked about it, it's adding in that two families would be incorporated into the site plan review process.
Okay.
And that's, that way, we are now, we will now be able to, as staff, review the house location, the driveway location, grading, drainage, that, that type of thing. Everything that's affiliated with the, with the site plan.
Okay.
So the, the change that, that we're recommending is, is, you know, is this in the site plan review section, is that two family would be added to the list of, you know, types of development that gets reviewed by site plan.
Okay.
So why is two not, because a multifamily not...
But multifamily's already in there.
No, but why is multifamily not, not as two?
Oh, because multifamily is defined as three or more.
Oh, it is actually defined that way, okay.
Yeah. Okay, any questions, any other questions for, about that? Because that's number two. Number three is the, this is the auto repair stations, right, Amy, that you wanted? Okay. And so Amy went at great length working on this and...
I think we went into detail discussing it a couple of times.
Right.
Yeah, so basically, and I, and I know my chart's off if you look at the, so that's just, that's, you know.
Okay.
It's just a little alignment.
So just a quick question on all the BAs being crossed out, does that mean they will be not allowed in, in those locations now?
Right.
Yeah, so, so in the, in the, for auto repair shop, so in the, in the...
Yeah.
I don't know why I'm shouting. So in the BE...
Passion, it's passion. Would you say Kathy?
In the BE, Business West and the Business South.
Yeah.
Right now, an auto repair shop is allowed by a special permit and the proposal is to have it as a prohibited use.
Okay. And the only place it would be allowed is in highway business or industrial?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question on that. Part of the Business South zone is on Route 9. And part of it is at the intersection of Otis Street and 9 and Lawrence Street and 9. And there are businesses in there. Why couldn't we allow an auto body repair shop there, or an auto repair shop there?
Is, oh, Business South goes out that way?
A Business South is, um...
By Walmart?
Right, it's the, it used to be an industrial district and then in 2009 it was changed to Business South. So it includes Lawrence Street and Otis Street.
Oh.
And that's fine if you guys want to do that. I was just, I didn't know it that far.
I think that should still be allowed and we may, may never see anybody come in and ask for it, but I think...
Yeah.
I, I don't think it should be a norm.
Okay. Leslie?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that Kathy, or?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, you just need to vote, you know, when you do your, your public hearing.
Okay.
So, all right, so you're going to leave it as a BA?
Yeah. That's a good point, George, I didn't remember it was all the way out by Walmart. Okay. Okay, so we're just going to do downtown business, business east and business west? Okay.
Well, actually downtown business is already prohibited.
Right.
If, again, I'm sorry, that...
Oh, I get it, yeah.
Till I was passing this out, that my, my spreadsheet talking was...
Okay.
And then the auto body shop right now is, the, the change that's proposed is in the Business West District. Right now, it's allowed by a special permit and the proposal is to change that to a prohibited.
Okay. All right, article number four is going to be the dimensional regulations for two-family dwelling that we talked about. Kathy has done the numbers that we talked about at the last meeting. If we could go back and read this and think about it and then come back, I know there was some discussion, but I think we came to consensus that the majority of the board approved of this with all the setbacks.
I know there was a, there, I mean, after I, I sent this out to you, one of you had a question about the, the rear setback. I, I remember I had put the, the graph together for everybody.
Yeah.
So the, the rear setback, as staff, when, when we reviewed this and came up with the numbers, we didn't propose a change to the rear setback, but there was a question about possibly changing the rear setback and what did, what was it, Shrewsbury's.
Right.
So I am looking right now. Shrewsbury had a, for the most part, because they, they have many more districts than, than we have, but they had an existing 40-foot rear yard setback and they changed it in the majority of their districts to, for two families and multi-families to 50 feet. So, you know, they, they increased it by 10 feet.
Ours went 25.
Ours is 25 to begin with, yeah.
And most of our setbacks that we talked about have a tendency to follow what Shrewsbury did on theirs, right? The increasing of the side and the front setbacks.
Well, Shrewsbury's setbacks are different.
Oh, yeah. Let me just say.
It's Shrewsbury and that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Shrewsbury has, you know, again, depending on what district you're in, but their front yard was 30 feet, their side yard was 10. You know, so they're not, you know, you really, you know, it's not, it's not in line with our setbacks. So to be able to say, well, they changed it from 10 to 20 and that, and that's what you're looking at.
Right.
You know, our, our side setback is 15, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you go from 15 to 20 and then the setback that we're going on the residential C is...
The setbacks are the same, but I, we propose the same setbacks in GR and residential C.
Okay.
So it was increasing, thank you. So, yeah, so the, the 15 was our front setback, we're proposing 40. 40? No, wait, 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 wait. No, I'm sorry, no. Well, our, our front setback is 30 today and we're proposing to change it to 40. So it's just increasing by 10 feet. And then our side setback today is 15 and we're proposing to increase it to 20. And then as staff, we didn't change the rear side setback, but one of you were, were wondering whether we should change the rear setback. So I'm just telling you, just to give you frame of reference, what the town of Shrewsbury recently did.
What's our, what was side before? Side was 15?
15.
So increased by 10.
Aye.
I think it was in the minutes, I think that's where it comes from.
Okay. All right, that's good. Okay, so we'll talk about this at next week's meeting.
But before we leave it, I just want to go on record as saying I'm opposed to what's proposed and I'm going to vote against it unless it's changed.
Right.
I do not, I think that what you're doing here, not so much in the setbacks, but in the number of square feet and the front, as you're saying, no more two fam... in the number of square feet and the frontage, is you're saying no more two fam, no more two families, and I'm opposed to that. I think we need to have that as a viable option in town.
Well, you're not changing whether they're allowed or not.
No, Kathy, but you're saying you can't put it on a lot in residential, in general residential unless you have twenty, what is it, twenty-two thousand five hundred? So, instead of fifteen thousand, you're now twenty-two five, and you now have to have a hundred and fifty feet of frontage instead of a hundred feet of frontage. How many lots in general residential meet that requirement? In effect, you've said there's almost no lots left in general residential that you can build a two-family house of.
Well, I mean, it's, it's very...
Go to residential C.
Yeah, it's very, very, there's probably not any, there's probably not any general residential lots left.
Yeah, okay. So, but even teardowns, if you take a, a house that's, that's had it, there's, there's very, very few lots that could possibly meet those dimensions. Go to residential C. Right now, you're required to have twenty thousand square feet, you're proposing thirty thousand square feet. You're required to have a hundred feet of frontage, you're requiring a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. Again, you're, you're basically, you're really limiting the number of lots upon which you can put a two-family house. I'm opposed to that.
I mean, just so you know, these numbers are in reaction to your conversations.
Not to my conversation, that's why I'm saying I'm opposed to, I was opposed when it first came up, I remain opposed.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any skin on the game as staff, but, I mean, if you, do you have other, I mean, that's up to you as a board to decide. I mean, do you have other suggestions? Does the board wanna consider something else?
I will give you a suggestion, yes. I don't have something typed, I'll give you a suggestion. I don't have a problem with you.
Well, no, it's not me that you have to give it to, I mean, you all need to discuss this and then you tell us what, what you wanna have put in the zoning article, so...
I understand. I'll bring something typed for the next meeting and we can discuss it. I don't mind a small increase, but I don't wanna have such a dramatic increase that we don't have this type of housing anymore.
But again, I think just to, you know, so, so that everyone is clear on this, you know, that the, the process isn't changing, you know, it's still, you know, allowed by rights in the general residential and then by a special permit in the RC, and that's, you know, that's what's allowed today. I mean, that's how it's, how it's regulated.
You're concerned it's effectively prohibited, not explicitly, but effectively prohibited.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and I, to be honest, I, these are, I have a really hard time with these kinds of things because they're just arbitrary numbers to me, so I have a really difficult time wrapping my head around what are, what are good choices.
Well, I, I mean, they're, they're not arbitrary, I mean, we talked about this at the last meeting, but...
For me, I, I guess they're hard for me to grasp and to, to, to evaluate whether they're, they're viable and, you know, good decisions or not. I just have a hard time. I'm not saying I'm opposed or in favor, I just have a hard time understanding what the net result will be. So, I'm curious to see what you'll come up with.
Okay. We can also look at the most recent ones that were done over the past couple of years and give you a sense of what the lots look like and the frontage and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's, that's, you said they're kind of arbit, or abstract, maybe I shouldn't say arbitrary, abstract to me.
Okay.
Make sure it's helpful to me.
Um, so I just wanna move on to article number five now. So, this is with regards to, I'm trying to read this, the density and dimensional regulations.
Right, this is the, this is regarding multifamily, the discussions you've been having about multifamily.
Mm-hmm.
Town council may split this into two articles, I'm not sure, but I won't, won't know that till, till, till they review it. But the proposals that you've been, you know, again, talking about is changing the number of multifamily units. Presently, the, it's eight today and you're proposing to decrease that to six. So, that's where the, the places that it's affected in the zoning bylaw is in footnote nine in the table of uses. And then, in the supplemental regulations, if you go down to C, which is the bottom paragraph, the, nothing's changing in A and B, which is the downtown business district and business east district. In the, in C, it refers to the Business West and the Business South. Really hasn't been, I mean, there's been no proposals in the Business South district, but, so basically, it's changing it from, again, if you, if you, if anyone's got the table, you go back to the table, it's, it's easier to see on the table, but that's not how you do zoning. You know, that was just for your, you know, you know, for your, for you to review. But the, today, for a multifamily, it's twenty thousand square feet for the first two units and you discussed leaving it at twenty thousand for the first two. And then today, you need, for any unit over two, you need thirty-five hundred square feet for each unit over two, and we discussed doubling that to seven thousand square feet. So, so you're changing the number of units and you're changing the size of the lot, that, the, the land area that someone would need to do a multifamily.
And just to remind the board, this is based on the applicant who went to the ZBA on King Street, and we got feedback that it was just too dense and so we're just taking a look again at. Would the ZBA be able to weigh in on this with us, Kathy, where we could talk to them?
Yeah, I reviewed these with the ZBA at their last meeting.
Okay.
And they, again, they, they typically don't take a position on the zoning articles or really offer any input into it. They look at that as that that's the job of the planning board to make the proposed changes, and then, you know, whatever becomes the, the change, then, you know, then they look to their, the, you know, when someone comes in with a project and it now meets, needs to meet the new zoning. So, I went through every one of these changes with them and they didn't have any, I mean, we had an discussion about it, but they didn't have any suggestions as to whether they thought that it was, you know, too much or too little or, you know.
But they obviously denied the King Street one based on the density, so that's what sort of...
I believe that's why they denied that.
So, which is why we started looking at this.
And there was a lot, there, there was comments during the hearing that it seemed to be a lot of units on a small lot.
Yeah.
And so, you know, even though he met the formula, but, you know, just again, it's, I think, as we had discussed at some previous meetings, you know, it's not just that project, but it's a couple of other multifamilies that people seem to be reacting to for the, the scale and the, the size of the developments.
Okay.
I just got a question.
Go ahead.
And it may be for like more the building inspector, but I just wanted more verification of the difference between the multifamily and the single family attached, because we talked about it briefly, but I think we're gonna come back to the, because even with King Street, to me, those look like townhouses. And a townhouse is single family dwelling attached, but he went for multifamily. And multifamily says a building designed or intended for the use of home or residence for more families, but when you look up the definitions of multifamily, it's, it's more like a shared door, a shared hallway. Multifamily stated it was more like apartments, garden apartments, where when I looked up single family dwelling attached, it's more like the townhouses where they each have their own floor, ground floor.
Which, which could also be multifamily. I talked to Joe, he doesn't have any issue with, with how these, I mean, they're, he said they're crystal clear to him.
Well, it seems funny, like, why would you have single family attached? Because single family attached, you couldn't do in Business West, so he's like, okay, I'll do multifamily. Or a single family attached, we only allow four. So, multifamily, you allow eight, so why would anyone ever use single family attached?
No, they're all, they're all up to eight. If you, if you look at, let's see...
I can only find my...
If you look at the, the footnote for single family attached, um...
Just footnote, no.
It's up to eight. And then, it, it's the, it's the same formula.
Kathy, where are you on the...
Two thousand and fourteen, but when I look...
If you, if you look on, on page thirty-nine, starting on the, the table of uses.
Yeah.
If you look at, under the first principal use, it says single family, excuse me, the third one, single family dwelling attached. And then you go to footnote two, which is two pages over.
Right.
You know, you can do up to eight.
Then if you go two pages down, that's for a residential. Which right here, we were talking about commercial.
Two pages.
Yeah, so then if you wanna...
Footnote eight, I have four.
Yep, so then if you wanna go over to commercial, um, commercial, commercial, um, single family attached, you go to footnote eight, and just in the downtown business district, you can only do four. And that was purposely written.
Right.
Because they didn't want, I mean, when, when we did this, we didn't want more than four in the downtown.
Right, but they don't allow it in Business West either. If I go to single family, they only allow it in downtown and they say only four.
Right.
So, then if you wanted to do a single family attached and we approve it under multifamily...
But it, but it is multifamily. If you read the definition of multifamily...
Yeah, it says one building.
It says, living independently, blah, 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 the, which may have a common right in halls and stairways.
Right.
So, so you don't, it doesn't have to have that.
But it's a detached residential building where the other ones are...
So, therefore, that gives you a townhouse.
Residential.
If you don't have a common hallway, which is like, you know, garden style, they used to call it garden style. So, if you don't, if you don't have the common hallway, then what you have are townhouses.
Right, but there's a definition for townhouse too. It just seems like if someone's going for a townhouse, they should go under townhouse, and if you're going for multifamily, you go under multifamily.
So, you're saying you don't understand the difference between a townhouse and multifamily?
Oh, no, I do, I do, but I just think there's two definitions here, and I think if someone goes for a single family attached townhouse, they should, the definition of the bylaw should be number two, and if you're going multifamily, it's number five.
But, but multi...
But you're saying that, single family, you're saying townhouses fall under multifamily also.
Right.
Right.
So, why would anyone ever have to follow two, single family attached?
They don't have to follow it, they can just decide what they wanna build.
Are you saying why it's, why is it even in the bylaw?
Right, yeah.
She wants to know why it's even in the bylaw, if it's under multifamily. Why doesn't it just say multifamily?
Uh, it's just a form of, of housing. I mean, it's just, it's just...
Like a style?
Yeah, just a style of housing.
Yeah.
Right.
And you have attached housing, you have detached housing, you have, you know, two units, then you have three or more units. And three or more units can either be, you know, a series of townhouses.
Yeah.
Um, that could be, I'm trying to think if they, if...
I think in some towns where they are different, like a single family attached is a townhouse, which are three or more different buildings. They have a firewall in between them, they go from ground to...
Let's get started, drive safely.
And the...
Oh. So, can I make a recommendation? Why don't you put your thoughts down in a memo so we can send it to the planning board and we can think about that when we discuss for next...
Right, or I was thinking maybe to the building inspector.
Okay.
Cause he...
I, I mean, I've, you asked me to talk to him after the last meeting, I talked to him and I'm telling you what he says. I mean, if you want something, I mean, if you want somebody more than that, I mean, I...
No, I just wanted to double check what he said. So, he's saying that if you have a townhouse...
Yeah.
It can either be single family attached or it can be multifamily.
Yep.
A townhouse is multifamily.
Yeah. It's just a style of multifamily?
Right, it's just some other towns that are separate.
Okay.
Different.
All right. So, I think if you want to do something before town meeting, you'd have to get something together for next week's, I mean, two weeks.
I just wanted clarification.
And but, but it might be too late.
I didn't want to change anything, I just wanted clarification if, if in our bylaws...
Well, I, I, I don't, I'm sorry if I'm missing something, I don't know how else to explain it, that, that a townhouse is a kind of multifamily.
Right, but we have them defined twice, so I just...
Right, we have, right, we have single family attached defined, we have single family detached defined, single family attached, we have two-family defined, we have multifamily defined.
Right, but if someone comes in and they wanna build a townhouse...
I think that's a good thing.
They can do single family attached or they can do multifamily.
It, it, it's all multifamily.
Yeah, yeah.
Then all the numbers should match too, like if you're downing one number from eight to six, then the other number should go eight to six.
They, they do match, Amy, it's just that collectively, people made a decision that they didn't want eight units in the downtown. They wanted the projects to be smaller and to be four units. I mean, if you wanna change that...
Oh, no, I'm just...
I mean, you can propose that.
I guess I'll write it up, so, and I'll send it to you.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the next article, which is article number six, and this is common driveway.
Yep, this, this one corrects what, what happened tonight with, with the common driveways. Right now, there's, and this is what happens when you, you know, you have two different, you have regulations in two different places.
Yeah.
So, the easiest way is to, in the zoning bylaw, we're going to reference all common driveways that you go to the subdivision rules and regs. And today, in the subdivision rules and regs, there are very clear-cut explanations of what you need to do, you know, the design standards for two fam, I'm, two family, the design standards for two lots, and then the design standards for three and more lots, and you can just go to a max of five. So, the, um, this is, I, you know, it, it's just something that we missed as staff, it's, we never, when we, when we talk about common driveways, we go right to the subdivision rules and regs. So, so Mike pointed it out to us, and, and so he, he's correct that this is what it says in the bylaw. So, we're just making, taking it all out and just making a general reference, go to the subdivision rules and regs for the standards.
Perfect.
So, we're not changing the standards.
Yeah.
We're just saying, go to the subdivision rules and regs.
Okay, great. Okay, so it looks like, Kathy, we only have six articles going to town meeting, which is plenty, and, but the green article, does that come from the planning board or the board selectmen?
No, it's gonna come from you, you're the ones that are proposing green communities.
Okay.
Um, so, the, the, what's happening right now with the green communities, I reserve, you know, a, a spot on the warrant, and the town administrator knows and I'm waiting for revised language from the state. They have draft, you know, article language and, I mean, excuse me, draft warrant language, and then part of, we, we've also had the, our existing bylaw reviewed by town council. So, and my different language from the state, which we'll plug in as the warrant article. And then just today, literally like before I came up here, town council sent us an email, I haven't even fully digested it yet, but they reviewed our zoning bylaw as to whether or not we need to do anything about renewable energy in, in our bylaw. Some bylaws, you can, this is criteria one of the green communities. One of, one of the criterias, I think it's four or five, is about adopting the stretch code. And then one of the other criteria has to do with zoning also, well, excuse me, the stretch code doesn't have to do with zoning, but the criteria one has to do with, does your zoning bylaw encourage, you know, renewable energy, you know, whether it's solar or, you know, you know, wind.
Wind.
Yep, that's another one. So, town council reviewed the bylaw and I was hoping that the way we have light manufacturing and research and development written in our bylaw, that that could be interpreted to, to include renewable energy. And, and their opinion is that it doesn't, that it needs some tweaking, some amendments. So, I've, I have, you know, a call obviously back into town council and then also to the state, Kelly Brown, who is here, to find out what in fact actually would have to happen. Again, some towns go the whole, the, a very expanded route and, you know, do a solar bylaw, but if, you know, there's been some indication that, you know, that, that, you know, we're not gonna go back with that just yet, so are there other modifications that can be made to our light manufacturing, research and development to just include simple language about renewable energy? And so, that, you know, that's, like I said, it was just before we, you know, came up here, that, that I got that information from the town council. So, that, I need to follow up with them. John Kader is aware of that, that, you know, that there may have to be a change to the zoning. And I've also asked the state that if we didn't have those changes for this town meeting, does it still make sense to go ahead and do the stretch code this year and then probably, you know, changes to the zoning next year? So, if, if they, if it didn't, if it, if it, if it was much more complicated than I think it is. You know, to just to, and I don't mean simply just adding in the words renewable, you know, industries, but, I mean, renewable energy industries, but is it, you know, would it involve something much more complicated, a whole new section to the bylaw, or, or can there just... Or can there just be some tweaks to what we have? So I, you know, I'll be following up on that tomorrow. So, but we are, I already have calls out to both town council and to the energy department with Kelly Brown.
Okay. All right, that's everything on the zoning.
I just have one quick question, sorry. When we go back to these mixed use and multifamily and townhouses, were you talking about something about height? Or we decided not to do that?
Did we decide, Kathy, about the height restriction? I thought we said that we could not do the height restriction or was it that? And I know we, in certain areas, you're not allowed to have a third story.
There, in the, in the business districts.
Yeah.
Which is where multifamily is, there are, there is a maximum height already in the zoning. So I don't know if that's something that you want to change.
No, I just thought that was when you talked about King Street, that they were going up super high. And that's a business district, so I didn't know.
The, now, he wasn't exceeding the, what the zoning said.
Okay, all right.
But the appearance, exactly, the appearance of it, which is what I think people
Okay.
across the board, not just at King Street, but across the board are having, you know, I mean, and I mean residents and board members and that it's the, sort of the scale of these, you know, it all has to do with the geography. So he wasn't exceeding this, but if you were going to stand behind it, you know, you were going to be looking up at something pretty significant.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, one last thing.
We could look at that again for, we'll just look at the height for when we discuss it on the 21st. And then.
One last thing, it's just saying back to that, with the article, it talks about the table of uses, part B, commercial, industrial, that's where footnote nine is. I didn't know if the board had any issues, we were, they were going from eight to six in the business side of it, but would you want to go eight to six in the residential side of it too? Because we only went to the part of the table that was business.
Did we decide, Kathy, to go from eight to six in all of the districts or just that one district? I thought it was all districts.
It's.
Because in residential, it's downtown neighborhood and I don't know how close that is, I don't have a map. How close downtown neighborhood is to the business district?
The issue, well, not the issue, but the, you know, multifamily, it's not allowed in the residential district, so.
It's just downtown.
On the issue, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just thought, this downtown neighborhood and on the commercial side, we were talking about downtown business, so I didn't know. I don't have a map, so I didn't know how they overlap. Are they pretty close to each other, the downtown neighborhood and the downtown business?
I think what Kathy's saying is they're not allowed, right?
Well, multifamily isn't allowed in the residential, in the, all the standard single family residential districts. And then it's not allowed in the Main Street residential, which is right around here.
Oh, but it's allowed in the downtown neighborhood.
The downtown neighborhood is up, moves, just goes up onto Hudson Street.
Okay.
I was just bringing that up because we had talked about bringing it down in downtown business, so I didn't know if you were thinking of doing it in the downtown neighborhood too, but it's up to everybody else.
Okay. So let me just look at this, so I can.
You, I mean, now, your discussions, you had just talked about the business west and, where else was it? Business west and business, and we really didn't talk about business south, but it's in the same, you know, section of the bylaw.
Does anyone have any feedback on that?
I thought we even talked about business east and business west, you're saying we.
Business east, it's prohibited.
It's downtown business and business west.
Yeah.
It's downtown business and business west.
And you're, you're thinking, you want to add downtown neighborhood?
Well, just, I just wanted to ask the question to the board.
It's not downtown business, it's downtown neighborhood.
Okay.
Well, in, right here, when you wrote the notes, number nine, section footnote nine, the one that is proposed for town meeting this year, it says the maximum number of multifamily units shall be six units by special permit in downtown business and business west.
But I thought your question now is about downtown neighborhood.
Right, I, my question was how close is downtown neighborhood to downtown business? And with our whole discussion.
It was said, and it's on Hudson Street. It's mainly, I mean, I can bring a map next time, I mean, I think there might be one of the zoning tables, but.
I just wanted the board to consider.
Okay.
If you were going down to six in downtown business, do you want to be down to six in downtown neighborhood too? Since they're right next to each other. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, I was just saying that some people thought bringing from eight to six and that it might not have the effect we thought because it might be downtown neighborhood and not downtown business.
Okay, with my glasses on, downtown neighborhood.
Not the best map.
It isn't. So it goes down past River Street, right? If I'm Hudson Street, down Main Street, it's a good chunk of, here we go. So, I mean, I think it's, I think we should consider it. This is what we're talking about right here, this area right here. So George, this is what we're talking about right here. We've already got business west and downtown business, which is a light blue. And then business west is this over here. So this is what we're talking about, this, this and this, to include it.
And we're already including it in these two, the question is the orange one?
Yep.
I guess I assumed that it was going to be across the board, or whether it's allowed for eight, that it would be six.
Okay. So Kathy, are you in favor of that? Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, George?
I would have to study it some more, I'm not sure.
So why doesn't the board just study it some more by driving down, taking a look around? And then we'll let Teresa know as well and we can have a discussion at our next meeting on the 21st.
Probably would be helpful to have a map that's a little bit bigger than this, so you can actually picture this.
I think it does go down to River Street, Kathy, doesn't it, right around where Waterfall is?
River Street, I forgot how far up, it doesn't go that far up on Hudson Street.
Yeah.
But it was meant to encompass, there's some, what some people refer to as, you know, older mill housing, that if that ever was to change hands, that, you know, you could have a greater density there. But, you know, I can just change that, I mean, that, or at least put it in writing and then you can decide what you want to do.
Okay, all right. So back to the articles, we've got seven articles, you're going to work on the green article and get back to us on the 21st. And all the board members are going to review these six articles, including the changes that Amy just recommended. And then Amy, if you want to send something to the board about.
The other thing.
The other thing, so that we can understand what you're trying to say, that would be good. And then also try to look at the height for some of these proposed multifamilies. Even though it's allowed now, we're getting feedback on it, we can discuss it the 21st. And that's it, the ZBA is on the 28th, do we have anyone going before the ZBA that we need to know about?
Well, we have in front of you.
That's right.
111 Otis Street, that's what's before the ZBA.
Yeah.
The, and we're in the process of scheduling design review for that, but it's the mosquito control building. They're just doing a small expansion to it.
Yeah, so they are coming before design review. We, we hope to see them sometime next week and we'll give our feedback for when they go before the ZBA on the 28th.
Fred, is this the one that's coming for the groundwater also?
Yeah. And just to talk about subcommittee updates, this applicant has come before us and then another applicant has become before us who has a hair salon and is putting commercial right next to his hair salon and we're working with him as well. So those are the two applicants we've been working with in the past four weeks.
What was the other one, is the hair salon?
The salon is.
He has, he had a building, what?
1990.
Fifteen years. But he's, he, where did Christopher's salon is? He had a small office building, a commercial building approved. And then at the time, you know, it just didn't work for him to then move forward with building it. And so now he's back, but obviously all his permits have expired. So he's back, you know, requesting the same thing. And he's before the design review right now, just working through the kinks and that. And then he'll be final with the, I forgot whether it's ZBA or planning board, I forgot which, where his site plan goes.
I think it's the ZBA.
I think it's ZBA, because I think he's in groundwater.
I think so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so he just has a couple of things to.
Speaking of expired permits, you mentioned yesterday that the Lowe's permits have expired, the old Lowe's property.
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's too bad.
Now, it looks like they started.
Even though they've started the work?
Yeah, it sounds like they're.
Yeah, they started and then stopped and I guess if you stop for so many months under the building permit, it's considered that you've stopped, you know? So, I don't know where she stopped really, I, I'm not involved with that process. I mean, that's on the building department, but if she has to come back, obviously she'll be back before the boards, depending on what she decides to do.
Anything from groundwater, you're all quiet, except for this one?
Except for this one, yeah.
And then, how's CPC?
Good, pretty straightforward.
Okay.
So White Cliffs is on hold right now because.
Okay.
Groundwater, that would be the contamination.
Okay.
So that's all up in the air and the whole team ahead of us. The town common, the building should be taken down any day now.
Good, any day now.
No, I don't have to say any day now, the contract has been awarded and, you know, when the company, you know, fits it into their schedule.
Good.
They said the building didn't come down right away because it was a gas line they found and had to wait for it to be shut off.
Oh, yeah, good, all good. Okay, great, all right.
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn? Would you like to say hello to us and?
No, I just wanted to see about the zoning.
Okay.
I would say that perhaps you should look at the revisions to chapter 48 that the state's putting out. Because a lot of the stuff that you're doing here is in direct conflict with what they're doing.
Okay.
They revised it since last year and this is the third year the state's worked on 48, but this year it looks like it's going to pass.
What is, 48?
This is like, this is like 15 years we've been trying to do zoning.
Yeah, well, this year is pretty good. There's going to be some changes, say in our, you know, like one of the things that sticks out is David, they're increasing the density to 10 units per acre instead of going the other way. But that's going to be a trade off with the host community for tax revenue.
Wait, no, we're not increasing the density, we're decreasing the density.
No, you're decreasing it, but 48 is increasing it and 48 is what does the town. But they're going to try to do some of that transit oriented development that's working over in Westboro. It's pretty interesting, I've sat on the committee now for four years.
You're saying 48 or 48?
48.
Chapter 40 is an A in amendment to it?
48, I was confused.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so Kathy, maybe at the next meeting or whenever, you can get us some of the updates that are happening on that and we could.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, it doesn't, I mean, it would be wonderful if it finally, because like I said, we, the, you know, American Planning Association and the Mass Association of Planning Directors has, you know, put forth amendments for, like I said, I think it's gone on about 15 years. And, you know, so when, when it, you know, obviously becomes legislation, you know, then we'll have to, you know, change our zoning accordingly.
Okay. Okay, great, all right. Great, can we have a motion to end the meeting?
We have it.
So moved.
Second, third and fourth.
Thank you, all right, see everybody on the 21st.